Calling the Board of Ed Meeting to order at six thirty and we rise for Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first up is public audience. Seeing none, we're gonna go on to committee reports and Board of Ed communication. Yeah?
Okay, hi, um, so for starters, um, starting with Latimer Lane, their teacher versus sixth grader event is coming up, which typically brings in around four hundred to five hundred people, which I thought was pretty huge. Um, from Simsbury, there's actually a lot going on. So five international trips just happened over spring break to Portugal, France, Taiwan, Costa Rica, and Italy. Um, this, the Learn Lady Spring Prep Play is coming up this weekend, um, and also there will be a Sunday matinee. Simsbury High School will host, uh, on the twenty-third, the first, um, ever career fair, where there will be over thirty reps, um, for different careers and students can talk to three. Um, some DECO students qualified for an international career development conference in Florida, which will start this Friday. Um, and the big, the big elephant is NGS testing is happening on Thursday for both SHS and, um, Henry James for science. Um, for Terrifield, they're having, um, they just had a client assembly where basically fourteen students received principal awards for citizenship and for all elementary schools, S-Back will be starting next week. Um, for fifth graders, they will have science, um, and third through sixth will have math and reading. Um, Squadron Line just had their art show and they're having staff recognition day tomorrow as well as Henry James. Um, Toon Hills raised over twelve thousand dollars, um, for their read-a-thon sponsored by the PTO. And, um, from Henry James, mostly I just have state testing, um, starts tomorrow for eighth grade, eighth graders, um, and they will have more testing next week and they'll get.
Thank you. Josh?
Nothing for me?
Jess?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Hi.
I don't have anything tonight, no?
Tara?
Nothing for me?
You do?
Just wanted to mention that tomorrow, um, is our Staff Recognition Day, an annual event in, um, Simsbury Public Schools, where we honor people who have, uh, long tenures of service, starting with people who have completed ten years of employment with us. And every five years, fifteen, twenty, we're getting all the way to forty this year, where a few people have been with us for forty years and we also honor our retirees. So events happen at each school and then the big event after, um, is gonna be at Henry James and we're trying something a little different by doing it on the half-day, because normally we don't start till late in the afternoon. So we're gonna start the event at two o'clock tomorrow and the formal recognitions will start at two thirty and we hope that will encourage more people to stick around for the event.
Katie?
So Rafaela, thank you so much for mentioning the Career Fair. Just to highlight, that will be for our grade ten students. So this is something that we're really excited about under the direction of Greg Stillman, our Director of School Counseling. We'll let you know how that goes. Um, another opportunity for Board of Ed members, you should have received an invitation for Capstone Day. So if you have any questions about that or you will be receiving an invitation for Capstone Day, my apologies. Um, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. We're really excited around the student presentations.
And now moving on to recommended actions, approval of minutes of the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Anybody wanna?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The next thing is personnel.
Yes, so two different, uh, actions for you tonight. Um, and the first is certainly bittersweet news that, um, our esteemed colleague at Central School, Beth Hennessy, has announced, she announced, um, on her faculty meeting in April, which happened to be April first. Some people thought it was an April Fool's joke, but, um, she is in fact going to take her retirement at the end of this school year. Um, and just wanna congratulate Beth. It's been eighteen years in the district, eleven as the principal of Central School, just as, um, thoughtful instructional leader as we have among our administrative team. Um, someone who's incredibly thoughtful about systems and structures and how systemic change happens and she will be missed by all of us, but we're gonna be celebrating her over the weeks to come. So the motion is there for your consideration.
I'll move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Beth Hennessy effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it with, um, congratulations and great thanks for an amazing career with us and so much, so many gifts she's given our students. We're so fortunate.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then, um, two resignations, uh, that, uh, came in just before April vacation. Um, one, Anna Connolly, Anna Connolly is a teacher, um, of grade one at Central School. Um, she has been commuting almost an hour each way to work and found something closer to home, so that we congratulate Anna. And Claudia Suprenant is a special ed teacher at Toon Hills School and she has decided to pursue other opportunities at the end of this school year, so the motion is there for you to accept those resignations.
I move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Anna Connolly and Claudia Suprenant effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, still to me for, uh, non-renewal of a non-renewed teacher, this is a process where, um, uh, if we're going to not be bringing a teacher back for next year due to a drop in enrollment, for instance, we need to non-renew them by May first in, so that they could have a best-by statute. Um, this one teacher that is being non-renewed, I can tell, uh, what should be an okay ending to this story. But Rachel Casper, um, was hired this year for, um, maternity leave. So she was only given a contract for one year, so she knew that going in, um, and has done a great job at Terrifield School. There is another teacher at Terrifield School, different teacher who's planning to take a maternity leave. So while we have to do this on May first, my hope is that we'll be hiring Rachel back in like a month. So we do need to do this tonight, but, um, and it's never a happy thing for someone to get non-renewed, but it is something that we knew was, was kinda coming.
You wanna?
Sure. I'll move that the contract of employment of Rachel Casper be non-renewed effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and that the superintendent of schools or designees directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Hopefully we can hire her back.
Yes. All those in favor? Aye. Alright. Okay, next thing, adoption of the healthy food and beverage for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Ah, the annual event is back. We can sit and read the motions for, um, this is an action from the Connecticut State Department of Education regarding, um, the reimbursement that, uh, you get for serving healthy meals. What these motions are mostly about, it's sort of not about the cafeteria food. It's about all the other things in schools, like a school store, a fundraiser, where food might be served. Um, and you are guaranteeing that you require that to be healthy food, okay? So, and you need to pass these motions in order to accept any money at all from the reimbursement. Um, and really, the main things that we know, we make sure that everything that's sold in the school store, anything that is part of a fundraiser follows these nutrition standards. So with that said, there's always three motions. They have to be read into the record, I don't know why, but they do. Um, and so Josh, you were nominated, you drew the short straw.
No, happy to do it. Now I don't have to talk about jump roping in on any other motion. Alright, so yeah, so we're gonna move that pursuant to CGS section ten, two fifteen F, the Simsbury Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdictions and not exempt from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school store vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premise sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Move that pursuant to section ten, fif- ten, two fifteen F of the CGS, the Simsbury Board of Education, hereby will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards, provided that the following conditions are met. The sale is connection, in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. The school, the sale is at the location of the event and the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, discussion, anybody want discussion? No? All is in favor? Aye. Josh?
Move that the Simsbury Board of Education will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in section ten, two, two, one Q of the CGS, provided that the following conditions are met. The sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. The sale is at the location of the event and the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. The school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the school, official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's on to me. I have two gifts this evening, so in accordance with your Board of Ed policy, any gift that exceeds one thousand five hundred dollars needs your approval. So the first gift this evening is to Squadron Line School from its PTO. The gift amount is for one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and this donation will be used to help defray the cost of the grade six Camp Jewel trip. There's a motion there for your consideration.
I'll move that the proposed gift of one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars to Squadron Line School by the Squadron Line School Parent Teacher Organization be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Super generous as always.
As always.
And all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. The second gift is a new memorial scholarship, the Kevin P. Schiller Memorial Scholarship. Kevin was a nineteen eighty-nine alum of Simsbury High School. He was the captain of the varsity soccer team and also a member of the golf team. So friends of his would like to start a scholarship too, actually, in the amount of one thousand dollars to be awarded to a graduating senior, starting with this graduating class of twenty twenty-five. They've denoted some criteria. They would like the first selection to be a female and male soccer player, but if that's not possible, oh, and a preference given to goalie, um, but if that's not possible, then a golf athlete or a general athlete. So very generous motion there for your consideration this evening.
I make the motion that the Board of Education accept the Kevin P. Schiller Memorial Scholarship to be dispersed starting in twenty twenty-five. He was a wonderful guy, the family was so devoted to this town and, how many brothers and sisters?
A lot.
Yeah, they were a wonderful family that was very involved and, um, we knew him in school and, uh, Bill and I and, um, I think this is a great way to memorialize him and I'll be happy to know that his name will be said in the halls of, of Simsbury, aye, going forward.
That's amazing.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I did my first.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to the Schiller family.
Yeah, so generous.
Okay, I think it's back to me again to tee up.
Back to you.
Of our first of two reports, so I'm going to invite up some staff from our PE and Wellness H twelve. And as they come up to the table, I will do a brief introduction for them. Uh, first we have Amanda Rory, who is our K twelve Wellness Department Supervisor. Give a wave, Amanda. To her right is Bill Sickinger, uh, PE and Wellness Teacher at H J M S. To her left, Bridget Martina, who is Wellness Teacher at Squadron Line Elementary. And to her left is Nora Daly, who is a Wellness Teacher at Simsbury High School. So when Neil walked in this evening, he said, whoa, it's the dream team! So no pressure. Um, but the reason why they're here, in a very similar way, Dave Prinstein came a couple of weeks ago with Jamie Sipa and Kelly Callahan. It has become now more customary that when a content area has gone through a curriculum review, because we've reinvigorated our curriculum review cycle, we ask the leaders of that content area to come and do a brief presentation to our curriculum committee and then a larger report to you here as the Board of Education. So that is why they're all here. Uh, there is an exhibit that we have utilized a newer report format, where they're going to talk about some of their celebrations and their priorities for this year and also some current and future challenges. And you've always asked, what can we do to support you? So Amanda and her team will finish with that this evening. So with that, Amanda, I'm gonna turn it over to you to give a summary.
Thank you. And thank you for having us here this evening. I'm really excited to be here tonight. This is my second year professionally in the district, um, as the supervisor. Uh, not professionally, I grew up here, graduated here, and live here currently with, uh, two middle school children, one who is in Bill's Wellness Classroom. I miss the blue memo, but I do bleed blue and gold, so. Um, yeah, but we're just really excited to be here tonight. Um, I was gonna have them introduce themselves, but Sue took care of that for us as well. So just, um, as a side note as well, Nora, um, up until about midway through last year, was at Squadron Line as our part-time PE teacher. So some of the, um, parts that we're gonna present about tonight have to do with when she was at the elementary level, but we had a full-time opening at the high school last year and she's moved up to that as well. So really appreciate them being here tonight. I have, uh, seventeen teachers that I supervise and five of them volunteered to come tonight, so it says something about the teachers in our district as well. So we want.
Go ahead, Jen.
Oh, good.
I just wanted to chime in and say that she also is Terrifield, I think.
I was.
Because I recognize you!
Oh, this is Terrifield. I wasn't here.
I know you!
Wow, before my time, so I didn't know that. And I forgot that!
Right, thanks for remembering. I remember you!
So as Sue mentioned, we have a number of celebrations that we just wanted to highlight within our department, um, before we kind of get into some of the curriculum work and the priorities that we're gonna focus on. Um, I wanted to start first with just, uh, the celebration that we have a pretty remarkable improvement in our performance on the Connecticut Physical Fitness Assessment from two years ago to last year. So we had, um, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we had forty-seven percent of our students reaching that fitness zone standard that is set by the state. Um, compared to that last year, just one year later, we had a fourteen percent improvement to sixty-one percent reaching that standard. So for those of you that aren't familiar with the logistics of the Connecticut Physical Fitness Assessment, um, obviously a state mandated test, uh, we are required to test all students in grades four, six, eight, and ten. And they have to be assessed on four areas of fitness, so four tests. Um, the aerobic fitness or the cardiovascular endurance fitness is for the mile run or the pacer test. That's the line-to-line beep test that, that they love to do. Um, we have the curl-up, um, assessment, which is assessing their muscular endurance. Push-ups assesses muscular strength and then sit and reach, um, assesses their flexibility. So what's unique about this state test is the student has to pass all four areas of fitness in order to be counted towards our district's numbers of students reaching, um, the fitness zone standard, which means they need to basically score one hundred percent on the test, which is a pretty high bar to set for them. So, um, as a department, last year when I came in, we did a deep dive into the data and really looked at, you know, how our students were performing and where they were struggling. We identified the aerobic, um, or the cardiovascular endurance assessment as the area kind of that we were struggling the most in and set about, um, you know, putting some pilots in place, Bridget's gonna talk about, but also some collaborative, everyone's gonna try these types of things too. And I think our numbers show that we've, you know, had a pretty great improvement with that first year of trialing things and we're gonna continue that trend going forward as well.
Amanda, just before you go on, as a reminder, this, I had, um, done a report to the board around our district performance profile and there's all different measures around performance and growth. This assessment is actually one of those indicators on our district performance profile. So it's measured, it's, um, you know, that gives an overall performance indicator for the Simsbury Public Schools. So I've really appreciated Amanda and the entire team really focusing on this and saying, okay, what are we doing now and how can we get better? And in just one year, really, really impressed with their growth.
So I have a question.
Do you want us to wait till the end to ask questions or should we?
We're fine if you wanna ask them as you go, that's fine.
Yeah?
We, we left some time at the end for questions too, but if you wanna just interject, it's something that comes up.
I was just curious on this, the, the data on this, this slide.
Yes.
It is a great improvement, okay, and I don't wanna take away from that, but these are different sets of children, correct? This is not same students.
Yeah, so it was, you know, if a student was in fourth grade and then the next year they're in fifth grade, they're not tested till sixth grade too.
Okay.
Um, but we really wanted to focus on, you know, things that would help the anxiety piece of it too, because sometimes that comes into play for students as well. Um, and I think when, when Bridget kind of touches on some of the things that we're implementing, it's just better practice and a better experience for students for something. You know, my, my student, my child has NGSS anxiety. We have students that have fitness testing anxiety as well, so just to get them to the place where they can perform to the best of their abilities too.
So that was what my question was gonna be, like the joke from forty-seven percent to sixty-one percent, that's a big joke. Um, so as part of it, what Jen asked, what Jen stated, is the difference in grades or what's contributing to that?
I, I do think, I don't wanna take your thunder from it.
That's right.
But we implemented not just having May be the testing day, when you're having your four tests or, you know, the testing month when you have to take the four tests, but rather exposing it to them throughout the year and having them practice that and get comfortable with it. So, you know, it is a different set of students, but I think when you see that big of gains, some of the implementation strategies and, and things that we put in place have helped that as well.
So when you're looking at the data later where you have your references, is that explained? And that's what the difference is?
Yeah, this is taken right from EdSite, which is the state government, um, document. And then next year we'll also be able to see the results for this year and we can actually look at those students that were in fourth grade and see how they're doing in sixth and then you've got the students in sixth and how they're doing in eighth too. And there, there are some, you know, nuances with this. Um, you know, there, there's a participation rate that counts for or against us, so they set this ninety percent participation threshold. And if, you can see we're at ninety-five, ninety-seven percent, but students that are medically exempt or they maybe get hurt or it's actually students that start the school year in Simsbury, if they move out, they're still in our.
Data.
Data.
Yes.
And counted against us if we don't enter scores for them too. So, uh, you know, it's a.
No, it's not.
We're trying, we're trying! So, so Bridget was gonna touch on a little bit, um, just that squadron and, and what they had piloted last year.
Yeah, so Amanda, um, identified that we were really struggling in the cardiovascular endurance section of our testing. Um, and last year Nora and I, um, decided to pilot switching from using the pacer to using the mile run, um, test for cardiovascular endurance portion. Um, we noticed a huge improvement by the numbers. Um, but really what we put in place was in our warmups, um, in every single lesson, we did a warmup that was a inside-the-box activity and an outside-the-box activity. And the outside-the-box activity was a five-minute run. And if they were able to run the entire five minutes, their name got put up onto our whiteboard. And at the elementary level, I've never seen kids compete and be so challenged in their life to just get their name up on a whiteboard. Um, but we noticed a lot of energy behind it. I had kids that were walking in the beginning of the school year. They were sprinting their entire five minutes by the end of the school year. Um, this in turn, uh, really helped when we went to test them for the mile run. Um, because when we introduced the mile run to them, um, we told them, you were able to run for five minutes already. Running a mile is not that much farther to them. Um, we were able to teach to pacing and not running super, super fast right off the line, um, but being able to pace themselves for the entire mile. Um, so then when we did the mile run, um, those kids that were running for five minutes straight were really succeeding. Um, they were able to run for the five minutes, maybe walk for a little bit and then start running again. But the passing numbers, they were able to pass this test, um, where a lot of these kids that passed mile were not passing pacer. Um, and then we're not doing well for the four out of four, um, testing numbers. Um, so we piloted it last year and then, um, Amanda challenged the rest of our district teachers to, um, use the mile run test as, um, the cardiovascular endurance section this year.
Yeah, just to, and actually do both and then we can see, because it's based on school. So if your school has students performing better at the mile, then you would use that or the pacer. So, you know, fitness is not the biggest part of our curriculum, but as Sue mentioned, it is in our district profile and our district report card. And so, um, we wanted to have students understand just the basic life skills of being physically active and fit and that's the important piece of it too. And for some of them, it's not about reaching the fitness standard that the state sets, but it's about learning how to set goals and work towards small goals to improve too. So, you know, the, the district, um, all of the teachers have really adopted this and most of them are, you know, trying to influence our students to just have a better understanding of it with lower anxiety too. So thank you for that, Bridget. Um, the next celebration I wanted to highlight, and we'll, we'll get into some more specifics on the health education piece a little bit later in the presentation, but just in the past two years, the amount of revisions and revamping to many of our health units has been, um, really outstanding. Um, I am somebody who's, who's brought in the idea that student-like classrooms are really what we wanna focus on for our students and my teachers have really jumped on board with that. You know, we wanna have students that are producers of their learning instead of just sitting and consuming the information that's being given to them. Um, and we know if we pique their interest and spark their curiosity, they're gonna be more engaged in their learning as well. So deciding how we can provide these experiences for them where they can have choice and work with peers and, and have a voice in their learning, in addition to aligning it to our vision of a graduate and, you know, aligning it to our national and state standards, I think that we've done a great job of starting some of the work that we're gonna be continuing as well. And I did wanna just highlight, um, one of our high school courses, the Health eleven, twelve course, which is taken by upperclassmen. It's a required health course. We have a brand-new unit that we created this year, um, and really its focus is to equip students for life after SHS. And two of the skills we are hoping to provide them with is being able to help somebody who is in a mental health crisis and being able to help somebody who's in a physical health crisis. So, um, last year, all of the middle school and high school, um, teachers, we had them QPR Suicide Prevention certified so that they could teach students and train students on how to be, um, basically the gatekeepers of understanding how to question, persuade, and refer someone that they think is in a crisis. Um, recognizing those warning signs and they are not the person that is saving that other person, but they know how to get them to the help that they need. So they finished that course with that certification. I tell them to put it on their resume, just like, you know, it's CPR certification, because that's just as important, the mental health side of it, as the physical health side of it as well. And then we also added for the physical health piece. And then we also added for the physical health piece, first aid and CPR training for the students. So currently, they're just getting like basic knowledge and understanding and practicing the skills. Our future goal is to get the wellness teachers certified as instructors and then they can provide students the opportunity to actually get CPR and first aid, excuse me, certified in that course. So finishing that course with two certifications, really great thing and exciting for us too. So that's just to highlight one of our, our new units that we have.
I think that's great, just fantastic.
Yeah.
I'm really happy to hear that.
Thank you. And, you know, it's, it's well received too. We, we definitely notify the, the counselors on the days when students are gonna be receiving at least the QPR training piece to know, you know, and we, and we make them aware of all of the different support staff in the school, but also encouraging them to just, you know, take that communication home and, and bring it to their families as well. So really excited for that work. Next celebration, Bill? Wanna pick that one?
I am not the teacher that is, has forty years' experience, I just want the recognition. I did go to school here a little over forty years ago, but that's not me. But Henry James. And I will not be that teacher ever. You're welcome, Neil.
Everybody will recognize it right away. It's actually Steve Patrino.
Oh, sorry. Where, where am I? Social, emotional learning at Henry James. We are really proud that we've really embedded that in SEL into both seventh, eighth grade curriculums. Having the opportunity to really implicitly embed that in our, in our classes and practice those skills is really something I think we are really proud of and I think kids really get the, the benefits of practicing those skills, primarily cuz we get to see the kids almost every day. They get to see in the classroom, in the wellness part, the health part, and then in the gym as well. So it's, it's awesome to get to have that opportunity, that's something I think that we're really proud of. So thank you for that opportunity.
Yeah, when I came here and, and realized that, you know, students are basically getting wellness the entire year, every day at the middle school level, that's such a key time in their lives too to get that. So to be able to embed, because really the social, emotional competencies align with our health and PE standards, so it just kinda seamlessly weaves into that. You have the everyday speech at the elementary level and then we have the connections at the high school, but, you know, we really have the opportunity to make those connections with our students here too and teach them some of these important skills.
At the curriculum committee, Amanda worked us through a couple of lessons and interactive activities to give us this.
They were very fun. I wish we had more people, we could've done it longer. We were okay.
It was pretty fun.
Thank you for being a good sport for that. The next celebration, the Connecticut DOT had an active transportation micro grant this year where you could apply for that and get up to five thousand dollars. We were the recipients of the five thousand dollars and you were able to use it towards any type of bike safety program or bike equipment. So we were able to use that money to work with Walter at the Bicycle Cellar, which is a local business in town, to custom design and custom build two adaptive bikes, which will help support, you know, all access for our students to our bike safety programs. You know, students with physical challenges or needs that don't allow them to be on a two-wheel bike, you know, they have access to these. So we are housing one of them at Squadron Line, that's the smaller size for elementary students. It will be a part of the bike safety program, but also, you know, we have a number of students there with some needs and so during their OT sessions, they have access to the bike as well. The other ones at the high school where we have a unified PE program and a course that students can access the bike. So just really proud of the ability to, to work with the community, but also to provide these students with the ability to be part of those programs that we have. That was our celebration portion for the presentation tonight. And then we did wanna move into the priorities just for curriculum. We split it up into the levels, so kind of looking at elementary, then middle and high schools. Bridget wanna talk?
Yeah, so we have completed three out of our five units and the mapping involved with all of that. We are hoping to complete all of K through two units by the end of next school year. And then we'll be moving on to curriculum mapping for grades three through six. But we have three of them done so far with really highly engaging lessons and really excited about that.
And this was a big undertaking cuz just last spring is when our national standards were changed, new ones were adopted. We went from five standards to four and they came out with a bunch of different progressions and things. So just trying to kinda look at what we had in place and then working in those new standards to our curriculum. So the team's done a great job with that and, yeah, we're hoping by the end of next year to have the K to two maps done.
And in middle school, by the end of next year, we will have revised both seventh and eighth grade health classes. So right now we're revising and implementing several of the, of the units. And then similar to elementary school, once we update the health part, we'll, we'll start updating our, our new health, excuse me, our new phys ed standards to our, to our curriculum starting the end of next year, I guess.
And it's a big undertaking for the middle school just because of the amount of time that we have, you know, see time with students. So, you know, that's why it's taking a little bit longer just to get through the health portion before we start the PE part as well.
In that being said, I wanted to remind the board that this was just supposed to be an assessment year, so the fact that they are already, this team and the whole department, moving on some of their plan, not just making the plan, but enacting and implementing some of their plan and priorities, they're very hard on themselves. They are ahead of the game.
Sue said it's a marathon, but we like to sprint.
I'm not gonna pacer.
And then high school, Nora?
So we have also been spending this past year working on the alignment of the curriculum for Wellness nine and Wellness ten. I've been on that group to get that work done so far and it's been really, really rewarding and exciting. Like Amanda talked about, we've been in the health classroom, really trying to get super engaging practices involved in our lessons, getting kids up out of their chairs, moving around the room, getting their work up on the boards for other people to see. Even, we joke, we call it speed dating where we like move them and they have to talk to different people. And so just getting them out of their seats and a part of the lessons. We also have been, like Amanda said, the standards have changed, so our big focus was aligning our new lessons, our common assessments and all of our stuff with those new standards. And then also aligning them with Henry James. So working with their team to get, you know, very clear through lines of the same kind of topics and information so that they build on the learning that they've done in the past. One of the really cool ways that we've been able to implement that is in our department meetings. So Amanda kinda put this initiative out for us to start our department meetings with those like little activate activities that she presented to you guys. And so it's actually really cool, as the teachers, we get to like be the students. And so we have grade levels that will show up and run a like ten to fifteen minute like quick activate lesson.
Very icebreaker-ish.
Icebreaker, yeah. But it's a way to like get our kids to be like thinking about the topic we're gonna be learning about in class without just like jumping right into content and getting them engaged and excited to learn. And so we've actually had a really awesome time in our department meetings and it's a great collaborative space that we've been able to like see things that middle school is doing and kind of adjust things and make changes into ours. Our future focus is coming up next with our Health eleven course, so doing the revise on Health eleven and then our lifetime activities, which is our semester of PE for upperclassmen.
Yeah, so tackled it a little bit differently at the high school where the ninth grade and the tenth grade courses are almost done. So ready, you know, we've sent the units to Sue and got stamp of approval for some of them or some edits to make on a few of them as well. We appreciate those. And then for the Health eleven, we targeted that one unit, but obviously there's more units than that to get to. And then looking at the new PE standards for lifetime activities. And I think one of the most important things about the wellness that we need to focus on is, for example, I teach 10th graders, so we just had this conversation on what, March thirteenth, like five years ago, you went home for COVID. And we talk about, okay, they were in fifth grade and what were some of those skills that you didn't get because you were in school with your peers and learning about those things too? So we've had to do a little bit of juggling along the way because skills that you think students would have by a certain grade level, some of them, depending on how old they were during COVID times, are impacted more so than others too. So that's where the SEL piece comes in and it's not just at the middle school, you know, we weave it through the K to twelve piece as well. So we're, we're excited about the work and the, the great thing is I was given a, a great group of teachers who are motivated to learn and do and experience all of the great things. So I'm sure it's a little fast, the push, but then I really. We're doing great. We're doing great.
It's so much fun.
We were gonna highlight just a few of the challenges that we've faced based on our priorities.
Yeah, so at the elementary level, we're having a difficult time just because we have a health education gap. We have a really limited amount of time to teach health education. Right now at the elementary level, we only teach human growth and development on two to three days out of the entire school year. And that is the only health education that our students are getting, K through six. And we're seeing a really
We get some in science, but he's meaning explicitly from there.
From the health teacher, yeah.
So we're just finding a, a big need for a comprehensive health education program in those years.
Yeah, and we've woven some of those, you know, content standards and requirements by the state into, you know, PE or they get it in the science piece as well, but just looking at the ability, because we do have a unique situation with the K to six elementary school. So sometimes, you know, those upper, the fifth and sixth grade, the scheduling of an elementary school just doesn't allow for them to transition to like a health class like you would in middle school and high school too. So, so being creative on it, but I'll, I'll kinda jump ahead to my other one as well. The other challenge that we had, the past two years I had put forward and proposed in my budget, a point three-three FTE increase to make kind of that squadron line part-time person whole, but in making them whole, they would have the ability to be that elementary health teacher that could help us with the curriculum, travel to the five elementary schools and push in for some of the, the health education that students would need. The budget constraints have, you know, not allowed for that to move forward, but we'll, we'll keep proposing it and we'll keep thinking of some creative ways that we can weave it into our PE curriculum as well.
The other kind of challenge that I, I definitely noticed when I was at the elementary level and it's still something that we deal with up at the high school, is our common planning time. So we have our PLCs for elementary. Right now there is a lack of common planning time inside of the school day. So it's been difficult to get everybody at the same meetings at the same times to do that planning through the different schools. And then we also see it up at the high school where sometimes we have a PLC where our team isn't our whole team. So we have teachers who are teaching the same course as we're working on the curriculum and working on new things for the course and they're not in that meeting. Excuse me. So it's just kind of difficult making everybody involved and pushing through all of those things.
And the time to do that would be kind of in other professional development or professional learning times and that kind of hits on my final bullet there. The majority of the PD sub days that I'm allotted for our department get used up with the elementary bike safety program. We just need two PE teachers there for safety and to support all of the students and we have five elementary schools. So the remaining subs that we have doesn't account to a huge number of days. And then there's also just, you know, the sub shortage. I had instructional rounds scheduled for this year where the eighth grade wellness teachers were gonna come to the high school and push into our wellness classes and we were gonna have a problem of practice to focus on and observe and look at what, you know, the teacher and the student and the task. And there weren't subs for that day. And that's happened a few other times with like curriculum writing time that we've had as well. So, you know, leading into implications for us, just touching on the big thing is just the time for the curriculum work, the curriculum writing, the curriculum revamp, continued funding for our PE and health initiatives, and then just continued time and opportunities for the professional learning for the PE teachers and the health teachers to be able to, you know, grow their content knowledge and their skill knowledge as well.
Amanda, what's the cost? What's the cost of the point three-three additional, if you know?
I think it comes down to like the step there on the contract piece as well. I think I had estimated eighteen thousand, but I'm not sure.
Speak to that.
So under twenty roughly?
It would be probably about twenty thousand if we took a middle of the scale teacher.
Yeah.
We have a part-time person already, it would be making that part-time person full-time.
So I also have a question. So she's raising the question about subs? So is it?
Yeah, that's me too.
I was looking, so I looked, I looked over at Neil.
Yeah. I, I mean, we have a substitute shortage.
Okay.
Every district, every district does.
Yeah.
And it is on a day where you planned a robust professional development activity, if fifty teachers call in sick that day, we're not gonna be doing the robust professional development activity cuz those, those subs are needed to cover classrooms.
Right.
The, it would be great if we could have a, a sub list that was longer. Typically, sub lists are longer when the economy is really bad. So you gotta be careful what you wish for. But when the economy's good, people tend not to substitute teach, so.
And I was asking, cuz I didn't realize, we, I know people have been talking about teachers, but I hadn't heard that we were having subs. And I know it used to be that we had long-term subs or, you know, building subs.
Yeah, we have building subs. We pay them more than we pay a daily sub.
Right.
Because they are, they basically commit to coming every day.
Every day, right.
Yeah. So we have two in each building.
Okay.
But you run through that pretty quickly.
Okay.
It's been a couple of years of that sub, of slow ones.
And, you know, the fact of the matter is that the building subs are offered for situations where someone had to go have surgery.
That's right.
Someone's parent passed away, like there, that we use them for, okay, we're gonna need this person in here for a month.
Yeah.
And, and that's
How they use.
Just quite frankly, I'm seeing more, our lists of people who are taking FMLA time for very legitimate reasons, aging parents. There's more of our sub use being eaten up for those purposes.
We have to do a daily prioritization.
That's right, based on the needs.
Yeah. So we do our best, we've gotten some instructional walkthroughs in on other areas, we just hit it on a good day.
Yeah.
And when they had planned, it wasn't
It wasn't those days.
So we keep trying.
Yeah.
And we keep thinking about ways in which we can ensure this PD time because we know that that's important. We know that when educators are watching each other's practice, that's how we get better, that's how we get smarter at the work. So we will keep on trying to figure that out and plan, cuz it's important work.
On that third of the position, can you just explain again just a little bit more like, so if that were to have been approved, what would that have enabled or how would that benefit the students in the town more?
The point three-three?
Yeah.
I was looking at it where they could push into the actual classroom experience, you know, a twenty-minute quick lesson on healthy eating or what's under the sink that I shouldn't touch, those types of things at the elementary level. You know, we have, you know, required content to touch on, but teaching about drugs and alcohol each year looks very different in kindergarten and first grade. That's just like, you know, the medicine in the cabinet I don't touch type of thing, but some of those skills are, are really great to have too. I would also like to have, you know, maybe like fire safety or police safety and having some kind of piece where that's embedded in it, but that could be an assembly that we could start to think about too, where we're hitting some of those skills in our content area and having it delivered by professionals in the, in the town. And then having students not only see, ooh, that might be a profession I could go to, but that's a safe person that I can reach out to as well.
I'm glad you said that. Just thinking about conversations even that I've had with chief, you know?
Yeah.
About how they could even come in. But the other question that I wonder about with the elementary, is there an opportunity, you know, when they come together for morning, when they're doing
Little morning meetings?
Yeah, is that an opportunity that maybe sometimes some of the smaller topics that you could weave through some of the classrooms?
We could.
To share.
Is that your planning time? That's her planning time.
Oh, okay.
So we gotta
Usually like five or ten minutes and they talk about, you know, the teachers talking to them about like their day and the weekends and things like that.
So we could reach more students a little more strategically and a little more broadly for a point three-three. I mean, I think everyone knows where I'm gonna come up on these things.
Yeah, we know. We know what you're thinking, Josh.
These things always kinda come up and it's good to hear about them and note them because I think when we think about, when you hear a number and you hear decimals, you think about how it could really broaden the access to our students and really benefit them. I think those are things we just have to kinda make notes on and just when this stuff comes up, really kinda do everything we can to support it, so.
Plant the seed and keep, keep moving with it.
This would be a teacher that would go to all five schools.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Keep putting this in your requests.
I am. Thank you.
You didn't have to tell her.
She knows.
So is there a, a day rate amount you think if we increased it to for our, our daily subs that might make our list longer? So is there a um, a day rate amount you think if we increased it too for our, our daily subs that might make our list longer?
Um, yeah, I think it helps. Um, most people, I mean, we're, we're competitive with most of the surrounding districts. Um, and we, we do better than most people because the, we, we anecdotally, subs will say to us, oh, I like coming to Sims Berry.
Right.
As opposed to some of the other, like, if you call me, I'm going to come. So I don't know that more money is what's motivating them. Um, but you know, that, that was, we committed the resource to the building subs, saying that that was the real need as opposed to the daily rate.
And I want to say that like I, I have been subbing and stuff and, and even the private schools and like Cobb, you know, they can't get the subs. And so I don't really think it's a money thing. It's more just, more interested in it right now.
So that completes our formal part of the presentation. Um, you know, speaking for all three of my colleagues, just wanted to thank you all for this opportunity. This is a new experience for me too. I, you know, I've never presented in front of the board, so terrifying but great, we survived.
It's not so scary.
No. And, and much nicer. It's good also, also to put, you know, faces to names as well. So we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. And if there's any other questions, we did want to allow for that time as well.
You guys have all probably taught a lot of our kids over the years.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
Um, I think your PowerPoint's excellent. I do love the pictures. They're really, they do add a nice element of, of compassion and, and progress for all these kids. It's so nice.
Yeah, there was one that she caught with the jump rope in the air. That was-
It's a battle on it. They're still doing the piece.
All the other students were being watched while she was taking pictures.
Yes, I promise.
But we're finding better results.
My kids like the pieces of that.
I have one question. The um, on the elementary, you're right. Like my little guy was fired up about being on his name on that board, right? However, at Henry James and the high school, why high schooler could care less about a bulletin board? And so how do you motivate the high schoolers to actually try their best and not just say, because they know ahead of time, right? They have to get five, you know, or eight minutes, whatever. So they just are like, okay, I'll get there.
So I, I can answer this one. Um, this is actually part of Bridgette and I's and Lauren Masaro, who's also at the middle school, part of our professional growth plan. Um, because we're really focusing on the engaging practices of Demile grades, like the whole district wide. Um, because exactly, I went from elementary and I was doing it with Bridgette and I was like, oh my God, the kids are so excited to get five push-ups and get their name up on the board. And then I went to tenth graders and they were like, miss, you are crazy if you think I'm going to increase my sneakers right now during push-ups. Um, so I'll say-
And they don't want to be sweaty.
They don't want to be sweaty.
Depending on their time of day, they don't want to be sweaty during the day.
So um, it's been a big uh, challenge for us and it's been something that I have been focusing on a ton um, in my professional growth plan and for the future. Um, Bridgette and I actually have like a very far future goal that we want to put on a like district-wide like run or something like that, that kind of brings those kids that are testing that same year together, to do it together. Um, and then I've been trying to, you know, mess around with like music and beats per minute and things like that to try to get kids a little bit motivated and just the like persistence of we're going to go out and we're going to run a lap and we're going to pace ourselves and we're going to practice on the time and having your music and having all of the right pieces.
I was going to say that, that we actually, two of our other teachers that have a similar professional growth plan surveyed the students at, in tenth grade and what's going to motivate you? And it was like, I want to have my AirPods and my phone when I go run and, you know, I don't want to have first period lunch and then run, which is the normal for that time. So, you know, we've adopted some of their suggestions as well. So kind of empowering them to have a voice in it. Um, and then, you know, I like to walk in and show the data and say, this is my job and I'm not tenured, so I need you to pass.
Correct.
That's great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all coming.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Here we go. Uh, we really excited for a conversation tonight. This is part two of a two-part series where we're discussing the strategic plan with all of you. And again, we had such great representation from Board of Ed members on our district strategic planning committee. Uh, Matt and I had shared at our last Board of Ed meeting all about that committee development, what our topics were, what our process was. And tonight, what we're going to do, you should have in your folders, uh, the newest updated copy of that strategic plan. And we had asked you to kind of come to the table thinking about three different questions. So tonight, we're going to ask those questions in a little more of a conversation workshop format and then share next steps regarding plan adoption. So here are those three questions and I figured we would just take them one by one, right? Um, the first question about after reading this draft, what excites you most? Then we'll move into, are you wondering about anything? And then finally, do you believe that we missed anything? We had shared that we are going to continue with the titles of the same goals around student performance and our climate and culture, our premier workforce and sustainable investments because that's the work of our school district, yet those actions look really different. And those initial actions were supported from a listening feedback from you, from teachers, from our PTO groups. Um, but relative to this draft, what excites you most?
I'll go first.
Sure.
So I thought I was excited about the report card changes and their being tied to the vision of the graduate. I think that it's really important if we want parents and students to understand it and come high school, we need to change it in the elementary part first. Anybody else?
I was telling Jessica earlier when, when I saw this, like, because I was not part of the committee, so this is kind of newer to me.
Mm-hmm.
Before even looking at it, I said, I hope there's like a dashboard or there's something that gives some statistics because that's kind of always been something that I'm drawn to. Like, I don't know, whenever I, I, I get a document or a presentation, whatever, I look for charts. I look for uh, numbers and I, I was pleasantly surprised to see that in there. Um, I'd love to see something around, I mean, I, I, my background, I, I came from private schools as a kid, so I'd, I'd love to see something where we, we brag about our colleges, where our kids go to, to, to school beyond high school, um, what they do after high school. You know, because I think it's impressive for uh, the, the town, like some sort of, where our kids, what our kids do after graduating. I don't know if that's possible, but.
So I'll go next. Um, I too, um, have always, my time being here, you know, I'm a dashboard data metrics um, person. So I was too glad that, that ended up making the list and stayed the list. Um, you know, when I look back to our last strategic plan and I think when I came on the board, I used to always say, how are we reporting on this? Um, and, and so I'm going to answer, but move into what are you wondering about? So, you know, I, I, I like that and I know we needed to get this approved, but I'd also like us to really think about how we report out on it. And it should be a little bit more frequently because like Brian is saying, I think it, it helps to quantify when we say how we're doing. You don't have to wait until end of the year, but just all those times, you can use that data to help justify where we are. So I, I, the dashboard, I think, is a wonderful idea.
I'll go next. I was um, part of the committee and a vocal member, probably much to many people's chagrin. So I'm very pleased with where this ended up. Um, I think visually, it's light years from where it was in a positive way and I'm thrilled about that. But in terms of substance, I think there's a lot of really good work in here. And I am personally happy to see that there is some robust language in here about nutrition and improving what we offer our kids to eat every day because they can't learn if they're bed, they're weak. Um, to Sharon's point, I, maybe I'm making this up, but I thought we had conversations in that committee about after this is done, next is building out a timeline for doing this and that this will be the framework for the regular reports we get, like from Matt, for example, and the different teams. Am I, did I make that up?
That, that's exactly right. So one of the differences between our former plan and this draft is you'll recall in the former plan, there was a timeline across the five years. Right, and when will we start initiating some of these actions? When will we plan and implement? When will we say, okay, that, that's a complete cycle? And what, that's the, kind of the behind the scenes, which we certainly can share with the board that will provide that timeline. Because to your point, there's a lot here. It's pretty robust. And what do we want to prioritize first, next, last? So, and I think that that can um, then predicate updates to the board. So you did not make that up.
Okay, good. You did not make that up. Josh?
So yeah, so for the most excited about, I just tried to call things that stood out, so I have just a few on each topic. So I'd say the vision of the graduate being kind of all throughout this, I think is great. I mean, if that's what we're going to stand by is kind of like the pillars, if you will, then it makes sense that it's part of the roadmap, it's embedded throughout. So I like that the vision of the graduate is very much intertwined with the strategic plan. Um, I liked that as part of goal number two, right? There was a lot of references to family and community connections. I think sometimes we can get really kind of wrapped up in the school, the education, that's all important. But right, it kind of starts at home and the community is a big part of it, especially in this town, right? So I really like to see references to family and community connections. And then the other thing I was excited about, and Amy's not here, but I appreciate that Capitol Mountain Curry is on here as a goal. Like, that's, it was great. I was reading through, I'm like, look at that, it's a goal. But I think that's extremely important, right, to kind of get that taken care of. So um, those are the ones that stood out to me beyond the kind of standard things that I, I like that those were specific callouts. So um, that's for question number one. And then I have other stuff for the other questions, we'll get to that.
Um, I think, I appreciate the detail aspect of this. I mean, this isn't just grandiose. This is actually functional pieces that we can actually attack piece by piece.
Yes.
I think um, things that we've always talked about, and I think that that is how you progress. And you know, it'll all go at its own pace, but you'll pick, you'll be able to pick and choose and get to where you need to go. I love the um, aspect as, you know, part of what you were saying is, you know, making it, I, I think streamlining the, the young kids, the elementaries and making sure that their report cards are up to date because they are really antiquated. I think that's a lot that we talk about in the curriculum. I think um, I really enjoy this, the discussion of executive function issues and focusing on that because there are students, all students can benefit from that. And I think it's been a topic that is definitely embedded in our current culture and social aspect. But I think people don't really know what it's, how it's defined or how it looks on the child. And I think that that can be so beneficial to all students, especially our kids with special needs because I think it's um, something that is often ignored and is a huge life skill to deal with early on. The earlier we get to some of that stuff, the better. I think that um, having a pathway for every student is also something that we talk about all the time. I think that it's important and I think this gives it some meat instead of just talking about it. And I think what you were saying, you know, definitely celebrate our successes by telling what college is, but tell us where the kids are going. What are all kids doing next year? Who's going to the military? Who's going to trade school? And, and where are they going to find their successes? Because every student, if they can find success early in our programming, then they can just blossom so much faster and so much more fully by being able to have kind of an idea along the way. And it doesn't have to be what everyone else is doing. We have so many opportunities in our school that I think people don't even know that they can go there because they feel kind of stuck in a rut. So I think the more opportunities and the more um, vocal we are about what we can do for kids.
I think that's a, a great little segue too. At our next meeting on May thirteenth, we are inviting Principal Seidel to talk about the Trojan Community Council and the work that she's been focused on to that very point, right? These multiple pathways, college, career, military, uh,
Technical school.
different technical schools and trades. So she'll be updating there as well, but it also lives in that plan. So it holds us accountable for that work.
Sue, if I could ask even in that, maybe to give Maggie a heads up. Um, you know, out of COVID and stuff, there was a number of kids who took gap. It'd be interesting to see if students are doing that quite as frequently.
We have that data.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'm actually on that committee as well and it was, it is amazing, the stuff that I've learned and come out of there that will, our kids, I think, will benefit from having all the options available, not just for four years.
Yeah.
So it's been really interesting.
So the, I think that really sufficiently um, covers the excitement and that excitement is shared. This is, is a plan that is more pragmatic, I think, than plans that we've had. It's less theory-based and more action-oriented, which I really appreciate and it's work that we've individually and collectively have been talking about, that we need to prioritize. So thank you for that. Are there other comments around what you're wondering about?
I got one. So I, I don't know, I'm off, but I do this almost like as a bragging, this is like our, like we can be proud of this, right? As opposed, like so often you hear complaints about things and, you know, people nitpicking and they have an issue with this or whatever. This is our chance to say, listen, we're doing something right here and this proves it, this shows it in writing and put it down in front of them. I think it's great.
Thanks. I also think to that point, it um, really puts a, a finer point on our continuous improvement. Like, we really believe this. And yeah, we're going to celebrate the great work that we do and recognize that there's areas where we can be better for all students. So thank you for that, Brian.
Josh?
I'd say the wondering, the ones, again, I, I, I called out a few that just stuck out to me as I went through the list. Number one overall, it's a great list. I think we're just going to all have to like just be aware of like the budget concerns, right? Like that's, each one of these things is going to take some form of support, fund, right? We got to continue to grow and push forward. I know it's a hard time for that, but that's something we have to like, in the wondering, like how do we push forward these things in the, in the times we're in? Um, a couple of things specifically to call out, and goal number three about premier workforce. Um, I don't know if we necessarily have to make it an exact goal, but something around keeping an eye on the average years of experience. I know, you know, you guys have heard me say this before, right? Again, as it feels like that number's maybe coming down as we're trying to be budget conscious or what's out there, I would, I don't know if, again, it's a goal or it's a metric or it's something out there. For the next five years, I'd really like to keep an eye on that average years of experience because I think that's a delicate balance and I think that's something to call out. And then I don't think it has to be specifically called out, but there's a lot of talk about assess, like goal number one, right? The three goals on there, right? They all talk about premier learn, right? The success for every student, supportive learning experience and, you know, engaging in assessment practices. I do think one thing, right, and I know we've got a plan this year for it, but right, like the Henry James Math, I think that's something that's come up. So I don't, again, I don't know if that needs to be specifically called out, but I do feel like for all the things that we see where we're like up there with the greenages and the dairy, like that's one when we look at our numbers. And I know Sue, you're on that and there's a really detailed plan that I was putting in place this year. And I, when I was looking through the curriculum notes from earlier, it looks like you guys are on that. I just think that's one that at least from what I'm experiencing and I hear from people I know, um, that that's one I know we've just got to keep banging away on. It's a tough, it's a tough, it's probably, math is probably the hardest thing. Middle school's probably the hardest age, right? You put them together and it's going to be a tough assignment, but we just got to figure a way to kind of get that one up.
No doubt. And, and again, as I did with, with Tara's comment, at the end of May, you will be hearing from the seven twelve math department leaders in a very similar report format around celebrations, priorities, next steps and supports.
Perfect.
So.
I was up for number two.
Anything else you're wondering about?
I'm going to wonder, what's our next question?
The last question is, do you believe anything is missing?
Well, then I'm going to wonder. My questions are, obviously, it's the prioritizing. You know, I mean, there's so many things we want to do and I think I'm always curious as to how we make sure that we are very responsible and thoughtful in our prioritizing of these. Um, obviously, the facilities plan is always a big priority and a concern that I have, you know. I think it's in here, I think it's where it's supposed to be and, and where it's living, but I just, I think that that's something that I always have kind of in the back of my head, um, making sure that we have what we need for that. But um, I think, and I think the more communication and the more we get out to people, the more we can have a community. The community can be part of this because community can benefit from all of these things that we're doing, is my philosophy.
Great transparency.
Always.
Yeah, what do we do, so just, what do we do with the strategic plan? I mean, aside from put it on our website or whatever, like.
Oh, it, it guides all of our work with-
But do, do we mail it to people or do we, you know, how do we, how do we? Okay, okay, that's what comes out. Perfect.
And then we'll always have some hard copies up here at the board and-
Right, and, and refer, refer to it.
Right, and refer, refer to it, and any, I'm, we, we should be referring people to it as well when we're talking to people in the supermarket.
I like it from the communicator. That's a good call.
Me too.
Anything that you believe is missing as we prepare for the next five years? But like, was there something that you were like, oh?
There's a few that I wrote, just again, tried to do a few for each, that, I don't know if they need to be called specifically, but when I was looking for what maybe just flies under the radar. One of them, the master facility plan, I'll come with you, right, it's a wondering, but it's also missing. I don't know if we, again, put it in there as a bullet, but it feels like if you're thinking over the next five years, I think it's imperative that if we're gonna keep moving forward, there almost has to be something there, that something's been voted on, broken ground, that something's, there's something there that we've gotten to a place. It's not just a general be aware of, it's a, we need to.
Action item.
Yes.
Good, can I, hi, Simon, before you go, can you?
You're the acting chair.
All right.
Oh, my God.
Like, there was once I saw a document, I don't remember if it was the last one, but like, it's almost like in print seats here, you don't say like first year, second year, five year, sixth year, or something like that, so you can see and have an expectation of how that breaks down.
So that's what Jessica was asking about, right? So I think behind this is the priorities and when we're going to start tackling each one of these, and being cognizant of what those priorities are, and being cognizant of the rate of change and what this means for who, right? Is it teachers, is it board members?
Students.
Students, community members. But that's kind of the, the next stage document, where we start rolling up our sleeves and saying, okay, how are we going to strategically approach these action items over the next five years?
And some of them are gonna be state mandated, you know, as we go through over the 10 years. There's always some state thing that comes at us.
There's always something.
It's one of these items.
Well, to your point, there was something mentioned, and I kind of looked at it, it says, plan proactively for known legislative mandates with potential budget.
Yeah, it's a thing, it's a thing.
Yeah. So, so the one thing that I think about also is when I first came on and the whole, remember the discussion about tariff?
I do.
Right? That was my, and I used, and I remember I came and said, well, where was that in the plan? Right? So even going back, I don't know that it's here, right?
I don't know what your, what your question is about, Tara.
Well.
I'm not specific.
We were talking about moving, closing, that whole discussion, right? And it had to be part of a, a plan, right? Or was it part of a plan?
It was all part of the facilities master plan.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we paid.
This is disgusting, correct. It's disgusting here under goal four.
It is, okay.
It's under goal four.
Okay.
You know, utilize the master facilities plan to leverage changes in the financial structure, assess the feasibility of the plans.
Yes, okay.
So I think it's, it's embedded within here.
Yes.
But I also just wanna make sure that we realize, while this is our strategic plan, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong here, while this is our strategic plan and our goals and what we, the work focuses on, there will be things that come up that will have to, that will be outside of this plan that we will have to deal with.
Sorry, it's not in the plan.
Right, and just because it's in the plan doesn't mean we don't look at it and talk it.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
It's a living document, as they like to call it.
This is not the Four Corners, a movie how to accomplish.
The magic eight ball.
It's the framework.
Right, it is, but this is what I think we'd like to accomplish.
But I wanted to continue to let Josh finish.
Yeah.
Your thoughts?
No, I would just say two other things I'd just call specific attention to as far as missing. Is there anything specific that the group talked about that if you think over the next five years that you specifically want to achieve when it comes to sports, clubs, activities? I know that's been like a really successful thing in Simsberry. And I just wonder if over the next five years, there's anything specific we wanna set goals or achievements for to kind of continue on that trajectory? I just wanna make sure that's accounted for somewhere, that we don't lose sight of, like, taking that for granted.
Sure. I, I think too Jessica's point of sometimes, you know, there are things and there's work outside of this plan. There are metrics that we continue to look at every year, and we don't need the strategic plan to have us look at that. And that is around participation in our sports. What is that looking like? What is enrollment looking like? How are students engaged in clubs and activities? And we get that information through Jeff Penny's office. Certainly, we have a coordinator for clubs and activities, and that's data that we're continuously looking at. One of the, the elements that we grappled with, I would say, for a while was around how do we assess students belonging of all students or students that fall in the middle? And what do we mean by that, right? And certainly, that's not just clubs and activities and sports, but it's around engagement. And I think that is the one that is going to be a little messy for us, because there's still some things and questions that we wanna ask and figure out, but we wanna provide attention. So yes, data, yes, we'll continue that as we do every year and look at those participation rates and where kids are trending to and where they're not, as well as give opportunities for students to start new clubs and activities based upon their interest, so.
I like that. Yeah, and then the only other final note I would just say is I didn't say anything specifically for it, and that might be all right, but we talk about the student experience and stuff. I know I hear, and I'm not the expert at this, so I'd, I'd look at those of you more involved with curriculum, like, I just hear study skills a lot come up, right, people talk about study skills, study skills. I didn't say anything called out for that, but again, thinking over the next five years.
Definitely in here.
That is the executive function.
Executive function, yeah. Just now, I was not letting that one go.
That was the wrong, like, Jess was, yeah, and I'm just, so it's a different word.
Yeah, it's there, yes.
But you know what, maybe we should put study skills in with that.
Study skills, not to get too far off a beaten path, but that is one specific executive functioning skill. So when you say that umbrella of the executive functioning, you're also talking about not just study skills, but organization, initiation of act, you know, initiation of tasks, that all falls, and that's why we did that.
But we wanted to, we want it to be, we want it to be available to, when the, my, you know, the mother of Stevie sees it in the thing, they wanna be able to see, because not every, and that's what I was trying to say, is that not everybody knows what E F is.
Okay.
Not any, not everybody knows what executive function is, and so I think.
Let me take a look at that.
And, and that's, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's it, that's a word.
If you wanna call it study skills, call it, call it organizational skills, or, or something. Because I do think we should have.
Call it what it is.
Like, study skills is a class.
But it's also beyond that.
It's beyond that.
It's beyond that.
It's just study skills.
Just that thing.
But it could be simply including study skills and blah blah.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think it's a great list, kudos to everyone on it. I think it's great, and just, you know, just gotta keep moving forward.
That's great feedback.
And I was an active part of this group, but I do have one more thing with on the premier workforce section. It's a, it's a, like, this one that says analyze quantitative and qualitative retention data for certified staff at key, whatever, that one. Can we include in there, like, non-certified or coaches or other things? Like, because we don't really recognize, like, our, we have good coaches, or if we have a good, yeah, or somebody's been there, like, could we include that in there, not just certified?
I think we can certainly.
Consider.
Talk about it.
Yeah, Cindy and I would just have to pull the data of that, but yeah, it was.
So I just think if the, if the, if our coaches are getting recognized for something, or, you know, why not acknowledge them?
Strategy six, action six.
So I think we're wrapping up.
Do you have, do we have any, any suggestions from our students?
Thank you, because I was just saying we should ask her as well. Thank you.
Um, I could roughly flip through it. Um, I feel like with, um, like, I heard a lot of discussions about sports. In terms of like funding, or like, um, how resources are allocated to each sport at Simsberry High School, maybe something like that would be nice to have, like, for example, I mean, like, just on a personal level, I play tennis, um, and like, our courts, um, are like at the, the high school, um, they aren't power washed. And like, our nets, um, are also kind of old, like, um, I don't quite remember if it got replaced, but there was like a net which was like hanging, falling apart. So I think that eventually got fixed, but like, it was there for like a while. So I think maybe with facilities, like, seeing what doesn't get as much attention. Because there were, there were a lot of people that played tennis for, um, girls at least. Um, this year, I think we have at least 30 people combined for varsity and JV, so.
And you know what, the community uses that a lot too.
That's right.
Yeah.
You know, so that is a good, you know?
Yes, exactly. Like during matches, a lot of people come and.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Just, so we're all on the same page with respect, when we're talking about sports and all things, I wanna make sure we're inclusive of not just sports, but all, but music, and drama, and things like that. Yes, not just sports. But I just wanna say, so I'm new to the board, and this was a brand new experience for me, seeing how this strategic plan comes together. And it was an incredible experience to see all of these professionals come together and share their insight and give their time to do this work, because it was a lot of work. We met a lot, and we really put some thought into it. And so I'm very appreciative that I got to be part of it, and I appreciate everyone who's there. And thank to you and Matt and Neil and David for running it the way you did, because it was really well-run and kept us thinking and on our toes, and it was just a great experience. So thank you for that.
Thanks for your input on it and being on the committee, because it is, it's a lot, I mean, we're all volunteers.
Right.
And we do do all these, I don't think people know that we do do all these extra, extra meetings. I think, um, thank you for being on that committee.
Oh, it was really a great experience. Um, I'm not sure you guys want me next year, because I'm, you know, I'm not shy.
I loved it.
It was a great experience for me, so thank you.
I don't know if I'll still be here in five more years, but, you know, if I am, we'll see. And yeah, you guys did a pretty good job, all right?
We did, we did.
We did a pretty good job.
So let me just share some next steps. Um, I want to take this feedback and potentially make some adjustments based upon that feedback, okay? So between now and our next meeting, Matt will get you through your Friday updates, any proposed changes, and we'll highlight where those are, so you can see some of your comments reflected in that. Whatever changes are made in between, we would look to potentially approve this plan with the changes on May 13th, which is our next meeting.
Yes.
And that would help us to get started with summer planning, implementation, prioritization, and to really start putting this plan into action.
I love it.
This is great.
I'm gonna move towards, move the meeting along to public audience, seeing none. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, May 13th, in this very room.
Great. I make a motion, will we adjourn?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Do we need to discuss that first?
No.
Okay, good, bye.
For over 40 years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming, education, and live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsberry's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsberry's voice.
Simsberry's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsberry Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.